Good morning. Welcome to a February 20th, 2018 County Commission meeting. We have a court, so I'll call this meeting to order. We're going to open with a moment of silence. And I would ask, as we do this, we would remember Deputy Sheriff Officer Kevin Stanton, who had a tragic accident this week and we lost him. His funeral is going to be this Friday. And if we would remember the families of the South Miami tragedy that happened also. Thank you. If we'd all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two minute items to approve, January 23rd and February 6th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. We are moving into the resolutions and awards. And Commissioner Barfield, I think you have the first one, sir.
Thank you. It's my honor to recognize Brevard Achievement Center on their 50th anniversary. And I'd like for Mr. Patel to come up and if anybody else you'd like to have up too. I'm going to read a resolution and then you're welcome to speak and tell us a little bit more. Whereas Brevard Achievement Center was founded in February of 1968, and since that time has increased its impact from seven individuals with disabilities served to nearly 4,500 individuals assisted today with innovative services and opportunities to achieve personal success. And whereas Brevard Achievement Center helps persons with disabilities through employment assistance, education, vocational training and support, and art programs for adults and children with disabilities, aiding those to serve, those served to achieve greater independence and fulfillment. And whereas Brevard Achievement Center helps employ and empower individuals with disabilities throughout Brevard County and across Florida, North Carolina, Puerto Rico, and Virginia. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize and commend Brevard Achievement Center, the largest employer of individuals with disabilities in Brevard County, as it celebrates its 50th anniversary, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of February 2018 A.D. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Commissioners and Brevard County. This is a really great anniversary of 50 years. Last week, just last week, Brevard Achievement Center was in Tallahassee, visiting our legislators at the state Capitol. And when we were there, it happened to be Space Day and Disability Day. It was an opportunity for us to speak on behalf of Brevardians and give a voice to the people we serve. But while we were there, we had an opportunity to see a person in a spacesuit, being approached by a person with a visual impairment. He had, it was a young man who had a little sticker on it that said, "I love space." And he had a little cane to help him feel his way around. He walked up and he started feeling the spacesuit, seeing the spacesuit the way he sees it. And you can just kind of feel the inspiration he had, the desire to be a part of the community. He could see a little bit of what Brevard County was about, and he could feel like he wanted to be a part of the county in that way. And you could see that, that dream. And that's what we do. That's every day. That's what Brevard Achievement Center does. That's what the people that work at Brevard Achievement Center do. We have people like Richard and Desiree, who work for Brevard Achievement Center, like hundreds of others, that work at Patrick Air Force Base, Cape Canaveral, the VA Hospital, and Kennedy Space Center, that every day they say that they're supporting our community. When I ask them what they do, they say, "We help launch rockets. We help be a part of this community and help achieve the nation's goals." We help people like Patrick, who comes to our day program, achieve independence through basic skills training. And we help people like Samantha, a student in our school system, get on the big stage at the King Center and dance her little heart out. That is a dream, right? That's the kind of stuff that we help them achieve their inspirations, their aspirations. And that happens every single day with our team, and we're very proud to be able to do that. And it really starts by having a very supportive community, a very supportive county. And hey, we don't go 50 years without having our community back us. And for that, I thank you guys very much. Thank you very much. So I've brought a few teammates here, and it's not just the four of us that represent BAC, but there's hundreds of us. But we're here to represent Brevard Achievement Center in this moment.
Thank you and congratulations. Mr. Barfield, I believe you have the next resolution also, sir.
Yes, thank you. This is the induction of Joseph Lowell Lodeholtz into the Agriculture Hall of Fame. I just know him as Lowell. I've known Lowell for many, many years. And this is truly an honor. Mr. Lodeholtz, would you please come up?
Could I ask other friends and folks who are here to come also?
Absolutely.
Because I accept it on their behalf.
Okay, absolutely. Are they coming?
One down, guys.
Maybe they're too embarrassed to, I don't know.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution, and then you and whoever else wants to speak is welcome to.
Have a be.
This is truly an honor, I have to tell you that.
Come on, guys, get a round.
Whereas Lowell Lodeholtz begun, began his 4-H club work as a 10-year-old boy in Union County, developing his leadership skills by attending 4-H swine and dairy cattle shows at the Swanee Valley, Central Florida, Florida State, and Union County Fairs. Was elected president of his county 4-H club and qualified to attend the Florida 4-H Congress at the University of Florida, Go Gators, several times. And whereas Lowell Lodeholtz spent 33 years serving as an Extension Director and Agent in Escambia, Brevard, and Okeechobee Counties. Whereas Lowell has had many active years involved in the Brevard County Farm Bureau, the Cattlemen's Association, United Way, 4-H Youth Livestock Projects, Future Farmers of America, and numerous county fairs around Florida. He organized the Brevard 4-H Market Hog Show and Sale and the Brevard 4-H Market Lamb Show and Sale, where he serves as the auctioneer for all the sales, and for more than 30 years has served as the auctioneer for the annual EPAF auction. And whereas Lowell has received numerous recognitions from professional organizations for his work, including Future Farmers of America Hall of Presidents, 4-H Career Guidance Award, 4-H Alumni Award, Distinguished Farm Service Award, Meritorious Service Award, Public Service Management Award, Paul Harris Fellow, Rotarian of the Year, Florida Association of County Agriculture Agents President, Agriculture Hall of Fame, Distinguished Service Award, State Award of Retired Service, Service to Agriculture Award, Administrative Management of Agricultural Sciences, Increasing Farm Income, Rural Development and Other Innovative Programs, National Association of County Agriculture Agents, South Region Director, and State Relations Chair, National Association of County Agriculture Agents, Hall of Fame, Berry College and the Distinguished Achievement Award and Hall of Fame Member. And whereas for over 60 years, Lowell has been involved in 4-H and agricultural community here in Florida. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize and congratulate Joseph Lowell Lodeholtz for his prestigious induction into the State of Florida Agriculture Hall of Fame on February 13th, 2018, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of February A.D., 2018. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Congratulations, sir.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Isnardi, Commissioner Barfield, Commissioner Tabah, Mr. Knox, and Mr. Abate, who I've known for all my life, just about seemed like. It's a joy and a blessing to be here today. Thank you so much for this additional recognition. You know, no one is better recognized and appreciated, he appreciates it more than it is by his home folks. And you're my home folks. It was a joy and a blessing for me all the years that I worked for the Brevard County as the County Extension Director and Agent. But you know, you do all those things, you get all those recognitions, but you do it on behalf of somebody else. And all the people standing around me and thousands of others out here in Brevard County, I had the pleasure and privilege of working with and having them support the programs and Extension Service that you so graciously continue to support. And I know that you will. It's a very important program that influences the lives and changes the lives of people that you and I never see or know about. And so I accept the recognition today on their behalf. And all the folks standing around me here, these have been the great supporters of the Extension Service and the county programs over the years, and with the Farm Bureau, the Cattlemen's Association, the homemakers, they now call something else, I think, Consumer Educators, I believe it is.
Family and Consumer Ed.
Family and Consumer Ed. That came after my time, so I'm just trying to get accustomed to it. And the 4-H members and leaders, the C-grant folks, all those are folks that we had a little bit of opportunity to help change their lives and to improve their economy. And so I thank you very much for what you've done for me today, what you've done for the people of this county, and I look forward to the opportunity for us to continue to serve. I still have a few years left, I think. And all those recognitions came as a result of people like these standing around me, shoulder to shoulder, doing the work of the people in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With all those recognitions, I think you had to get one every day.
You guys can stand up.
Oh, good. Okay. Come on, old folks. They want you, not us.
Yes. I'd say you do.
Come up here, folks.
Be sure you get all the faces, okay?
I'd like to have some of you guys with a flag as well.
All guys, please stand in the back. Bet you can come up here with me.
Those are very tall.
Thank you, sir. The next resolution is by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, by the tie, I'm guessing that you're Irish.
That would be correct.
Okay, sir, you have the floor.
It is my honor today to proclaim March 2018 as Irish-American Heritage Month. So could I get all the Irish-Americans that are here for their proclamation to come forward? In fact, I am. My father was 100% Irish.
So was my dad.
Yeah, right.
All right, now that I have my hat on and my bowtie, we're ready to go. Whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 natives of Ireland had emigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in America's war for independence. And whereas at least eight signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish origin, whereas 18 presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish heritage, and whereas in 1892, Irish-born James Hoban provided the architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction of the Capitol. And whereas Irish-born Commodore John Barry was recognized by the United States Congress in September, I think this is a typo, surely was in 2002. Let's make a guess. I'm going to say probably about 1872, 1782. One of the two. He was recognized as the first Flag Officer of the United States Navy. And whereas Captain John Barry fought the last sea battle of the Revolutionary War, interestingly enough, right off the coast of Florida. Whereas in 1942, everybody knows about the Sullivan Brothers. They made the ultimate sacrifice for democracy and freedom during the Naval Battle of Guadalcanal, when they all went down on their destroyer, the USS Sullivan, was, it wasn't the Sullivan, when they went down on their destroyer. And later, there was a USS Sullivan commissioned in their memory. Whereas the Ancient Order of the Hibernians, a national, state, and county organization, was established to enhance Irish-American heritage and is comprised of over 200 members throughout Florida and this community. And whereas it is fitting and proper to celebrate the rich cultural heritage and the many valuable contributions of Irish-Americans. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of March as Irish-American Heritage Month, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of February 2018. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to accept this resolution.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Commissioner Barfield made the second. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Who wants to do the honors?
I would just love to thank Brevard County for constantly standing behind the Irish community, and for the county commissioners giving us our proclamation for the month of March 2018, and for Kurt Smith, for he's been an asset and he's been hanging in there for us, and I really appreciate that. And I'd also like to say, I would love to have all of you, you're invited, to our annual 28th Historical St. Patrick's Day Parade in Melbourne. And I know Kurt's attending. And anyone else, I would love to have you down there, plus the rest of Brevard County. And you're all welcome to attend, and thank you very much.
And I would say, it's a great parade. Everybody comes out, everybody has a lot of fun, and I'll be there with my hat, my bowtie.
Commissioner Smith, I think you have the next one. I think your hat is still appropriate.
All righty, moving right along. Okay, this one will be for the St. Baldricks. Okay. Whereas the St. Baldricks Foundation is a volunteer-driven charity committed to funding the most promising research to find cures for childhood cancers and to give survivors long and healthy lives. And whereas childhood cancer is a serious issue and is the number-one disease killer of children in the United States and Canada. Whereas St. Baldricks funds are granted to some of the most brilliant childhood cancer research experts in the world, which enable hundreds of local institutions to participate in finding a cure. And whereas since the foundation's first grants as an independent charity in 2005, it has funded more than $200 million. It's a big number, folks. In childhood cancer research grants, and $1.4 million of that was contributed by the Space Coast. That's an incredible number, 1.4 million bucks. Whereas since March of 2011, when the Florida Space Coast first started shaving heads with the St. Baldricks Foundation, more than 1,500 heads have been shaved in efforts to show support for children with cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners declares March 17th, 2018, as St. Baldricks Foundation Day in Brevard County, urging the community to come out and make a difference by shaving heads to conquer childhood cancers. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of February 2018. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Congratulations and thank you.
It's all yours.
Commissioners, County Manager Abate and County Attorney Knox, thank you for having me here. Thank you for the resolution. Commissioner Smith, real quickly, the realities of childhood cancer are worldwide, where 300,000 children are diagnosed with cancer each year. In the United States, children die of childhood cancer than any other disease. Two-thirds of the children are treated with cancer, will suffer long-term effects from treatment, including loss of hearing, sight, heart disease, secondary cancers, and learning disabilities. Childhood cancer isn't just one disease. There are over a dozen types of childhood cancer and countless types, requiring specific research to develop and treatment for every child. Events like this are held nationwide across the country. This will be the eighth year of Brevard County. St. Baldricks will be hosting this event. Each participant raises money with little friendly competition with teams and individuals to shave their heads to show solidarity with children that have cancer. Please join us this year for this week's, a full week of events. Friday, we have the Bow Ties and Blue Jeans. That's on March 10th. Wednesday, March 14th, is a one-off at Central Park of the Avenue. And Thursday, March 15th, is going to be the Third Thursday Thursday at the Avenue. And Friday is the kickoff party to order a beer, and March 17th is the Big Shave at the Avenue. Thank you, and we really appreciate all your support.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're moving into the consent agenda. Is there any items the commissioners would like to have pulled and heard separately? No, I have one item I just want to make a reference to. It's Item 2D2, and Mr. Peterson's here. I thought this was just a good item, that we would make mention of this, and I'll have him explain it, come forth, sir. Mr. Mark Peterson from the clerk's office. I was impressed with their, what they're doing with the strategy with short-term investments and the significant amount of increased interest revenue you're making. So I'll get the floor to you just for a second, sir.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As we briefed the commissioners the other day, in the past year, we've seen definitely interest rates improve. From 2016 to 2017, in '16, we were earning six, on average, about 69 basis points, less than 1%. In 2017, we were earning by 1.07%. Right now, we're actually earning around 1.3%. So because of where the market is, our investments were earning a lot more. And I thank the commissioners for appointing the committee members. The committee, the Investment Committee, we meet quarterly, and they do an excellent job in vetting the process and trying to give us guidance. Myself, as county finance, who's in charge of the short-term investments, as well as PFM, who handles, manages the long-term. And so because of that combination, we're able to meet the cash flow needs of the short-term, as well as get some very good interest rates on the long-term. For '16, we earned $3.2 million. In '17, we earned $4.6 million. So that's interest on the funds that, from ADVORM taxes, from Save Our Lagoon, from utilities, that goes back into those programs. And so it really helps to kind of defer the cost from the users by just the economy. And this year, we're actually looking at probably three more Fed hikes in interest rates. So because with the local economy improving, with the global economy, with where interest rates, we anticipate, you know, again, having another good, better year this year. And the committee continues to look at ways of trying to maximize our return and yet keep liquidity and safety of principle at the forefront. So thank you for your support and commitment to the Investment Committee and the investments of the county.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for thinking all that. It's very exciting, too.
Yes.
So you do a good job. And I appreciate it, because all that money comes back into the general fund, and it's over a million dollars, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. We're moving into public comment, and I have Mr. Dennis.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to speak on dereliction of duty. On the Local Government Code, Chapter 87, it says, "When an elected official willfully and intentionally refused to do their duty, it's dereliction of duty, especially when it's violating constitutional rights." In my community, District 1, it is cruel and unusual punishment for a landlord not to do anything at all about a noisy tenant. You are the landlord, and the tenant ranges your tenant. And also, it's cruel and unusual punishment for a community to live under those circumstances that pay taxes and vote. Although we are a democratic community, we do pay taxes, and we deserve to be served as if we was Republicans. And also, it is granted by the Constitution under the Fourteenth Amendment right, the right to have freedom of liberty and enjoyment of your property. We are not afforded that, we are not afforded that in our community. We are not afforded that, we are not afforded that in our community. You cannot have a family reunion in your yard for gunfire. You cannot have a birthday party for your children for gunfire. You cannot enjoy your television for gunfire. You cannot sit with your doors and windows open for gunfire. And it's been a nuisance for years, and it need to be addressed. And if it's not addressed in here, then it's going to have to be addressed in court. So I'm just asking for the last time, you know, we need to do something about it because it violates my Fourteenth Amendment right, and it's cruel and unusual punishment, it violates my Eighth Amendment right. It also is a health habit. We have people in my community that works at night. They can't sleep in the daytime for gunfire. And there is a solution. You can withdraw from the Resolution 108 that's 2015, or you can enclose this gun range area that costs $15 million for a cheap metal building, or you can build a wall in the area where the gunfire is at for $1.3 million. There is a solution. So it's up to you.
Thank you, sir. We are moving into public hearings, Item 4A, and we do have cards on this.
Good morning, Board. Item 4A is request for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to allow pharmacy, drug and sundry stores, and medical marijuana treatment dispensing facilities as a permitted use with conditions in BU1A, BU1, BU2, PBP, and VIP, I'm sorry, PIP, IU, IU1, TU, and TU zoning districts. The conditions that are set forth in this ordinance is the dispensaries shall meet the requirement set forth in Florida Statute 381.986. They shall have, they shall be located on parcels that have direct access to collector or higher-level roadways. They shall not be permitted on parcels that only access local roadways. They shall be in an area that has sanitary sewer and water utility available. Dispensing facilities and pharmacies approved prior to this ordinance's effective date will not be subject to the aforementioned criteria. This is the first of two public hearings. If the Board approved this ordinance, it would be back before you on March 6, 2018. And the matter was heard by the LPA yesterday, and they approved it with two modifications to the conditions. And one of those is that the BU1A classification for medical marijuana treatment dispensing facilities be considered a conditional use, and all the other ones could go forward as a permitted use with conditions, and that the criteria for sewer and water says that they shall connect to public utilities. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Norris, do you have any questions before I call cards? Commissioner Tabaya.
Madam Chair, thank you. Tad, thank you for all your work on this. I appreciate you spearheading this. My questions, it appears, and I don't know if those were changes from yesterday, so please help me, but I'm asking why you're proposing the restrictions on certain types of roads and septic usage.
So the roadways, or through the conversations that the Board's had on this matter, there's been a concern about the compatibility with it being internal to neighborhoods. So the roadway at the collector level and arterial level roadways are your higher-volume roadways, which are not internal to subdivisions, so it would take them out of those residential areas. The water and sewer areas brings it into more of an urbanized location. So again, it goes back to the compatibility aspect of the surrounding land uses. The changes that I read into the record were from the LPA's recommendations that heard the matter yesterday, so.
Follow, Madam Chair, thank you. How many properties in total will be affected by these two restrictions?
The, pardon me for a second. So we saw that about 3,500 properties would be available for medical marijuana treatment dispensing facilities that do not, I'm sorry, that meet just the state requirement for locations. Once you bring in the collector level or higher-level roadway, then that drops down to about 2,400 properties. The, it's not really possible for us to do a determination on the effect of the water and sewer availability because that information is obtained or that information is contained by cities and other utility providers that we just don't have access for.
Thank you. I'm pretty naive on land usage, but anytime you hinder people's land usage as this will, my understanding would be that that would decrease the value of at least 1,100 properties, probably far more. We don't know that number. Is that what you're, is that what you're espousing here?
The, well, when you remove a use, I believe that you potentially have that effect, but I don't know that I'm qualified to make that 100% determination. I think there's a lot of citing criteria that would go into that and some other determinations through, through that. But you would be limiting and affecting those properties.
Thank you. Will property taxes on those commercial parcels on local roads or septic decrease proportionally then?
I wouldn't know the answer to that.
Would it be fair to say that if the value of the property would decrease, then most likely the property taxes collected from those properties would decrease?
I think that would be a fair assessment, but I believe it would also be associated with the development potential of those properties.
And one final question. You said there are about 1,100 that would decrease because of the road restrictions. Is that proportional across all five county commission districts, or does that disadvantage one district over the others? And I know you can't answer it because you have absolutely, as you said, no idea how the sewer is going to impact, but based on your knowledge of sewer access, can you take a guess at how that will impact certain districts and others?
I think that, I think that where you would find a greater effect by the water and sewer would be in the more rural districts. I believe if you were in the more urbanized districts, then you would have more water and sewer availability.
Are you done, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. Just a quick follow-up. I think this would be a good time to hear from the county attorney, Mr. Knox, because I had asked you one of those questions about the possible risk if we lower the property values in these areas from the pharmaceuticals, and you told me the risk was low. And would you go ahead and elaborate on that because I thought your comments were...
Yeah, there's a legislation called the Burt J. Harris Act, which provides compensation for reduction in values if there's an inordinate burden caused by the change in regulations such as one like this. The way that statute works, even if there were an inordinate burden on a particular piece of property, they would have to come to the county first to make a claim, and the county would have the opportunity to revise its regulations accordingly. So I mean, there's a way to handle it even if there is that situation.
So if it was, if it would have been, it would have been proper for them to be able to do that. We could change from the commission at that time on an individual basis even.
Yeah, the legislation effectively allows you to make accommodations in order to avoid that situation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Isnardi?
Commissioner Tabaya asked most of my questions. I swear, you must have my notes. I'm just kidding. As a follow-up to Madam Chair's question, you know, or maybe it's more of a comment, you know, I don't know that it's, that it's the responsible thing to have a property owner appeal to the county for any kind of remedy for their property values dropping, and I don't know that someone, a potential buyer of a property is going to go through the trouble. And again, it's more of a comment than, or an observation, comment, opinion, whatever. And my questions were similar to Commissioner Tabaya's about, you know, what we're doing to certain neighborhoods, and that's mainly my concern. And because we can't quantify the effect of the sewer, I don't know, at least in my opinion, I don't believe that we should be adding these restrictions because my concern is we are now limiting commercial pharmacies as well because we're adding more restrictions to them if we have to keep the same restrictions in place we do for pharmacies as a medical marijuana treatment center. So for me, I mean, that's, again, you answered most of the questions that I had, and it was very well written up to give us that information. But, you know, and I think once we get past this fear that these treatment centers are going to open up all over our county, I think we can have an intelligent discussion because there's 27 dispensing locations in the entire state, and five of those are in Miami. So I think once we can get past that and have a real discussion on what it means as a dispensary center as opposed to someplace where people are going to be smoking marijuana outside, I think then we can have a rational, fair discussion that's fair to all, not just the companies coming in, but not limit access to people that are in need of this medication. So, I mean, I would further support, or at this point, at least in my stance, and obviously we'll hear from the public as well, but we've beat this issue to death, and exactly what has happened is, exactly what I warned would happen has happened, and it's not, I'm sure, just because of Brevard County. But when we start trying to over-regulate these things, the state's going to come in and say, that's it, we're done. You know, you either ban them all together or give them the same rights as a pharmacy, the same zoning classification. So instead, our response is, how can we restrict zoning classifications for pharmacies? And I don't think, at least in my opinion, I don't think that's the answer. So again, I would definitely support the idea of removing these two restrictions because I think it unfairly, not only affects property values, but also affects future growth and restricts commercial expansion for pharmacies.
Thank you. Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, Mr. Knox answered my question on Burt Harris. You know, I, we're getting to a point where I think Burt Harris is going to be too much of a liability to us, and I think we're going to either have to make the decision that, like Commissioners Nardi said, either that we are going to ban him or we're going to allow him. And I think that's what we're coming down to. So that's just my comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, Christine, you mentioned that there were 27 locations.
In the entire state.
But can't, can't each one of those, or 27 locations or 27?
27 total in the entire state.
Well, each one can do 13, right?
There's 13 companies that can have up to 25 dispensing facilities statewide. Currently, 27 have been constructed in the state of Florida.
Okay, so what are we, so what are we looking at as the total possibility then?
I think it's 325 now, but once they reach 100,000 registered users, then that number would be going up by five per dispensing licensed dispensing, I'm sorry, licensed medical marijuana treatment center, which are the folks that are allowed to grow, process, and deliver.
So it's more than 300, it's not 27. Here's my concern.
27 now.
I, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't know anybody that does, and we're really in uncharted territory here, so I, I don't know what to do. I know that the voters voted for this, and I would like to give them every opportunity to access this product, but I know that cities have, in fact, we already have Satellite Beach and Palm Bay that have agreed to...
Titusville, too.
Titusville? Okay, so we have the north, the middle, and the south part of the county kind of covered, and each one of those, each one of those cities could have up to how many?
Well, the number of dispensing facilities allowed is based on the region, and there's a formula that looks at the number of registered users, the population in that region, and then they come up with the number that would be allowed in the region. So it's really difficult to say how many would be in Brevard County because it would be like a seven-county region.
So it could be, we are, we know we'll have at least three, and we could have...
Potentially, each one of them could have one, but...
Right. So, and they can, they can order it. So my big problem here is unintended consequences, and unintended means we don't know what they might be. And again, I don't have a crystal ball, so, you know, I'm going to let you lead the charge on this because I don't really, I don't have answers.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Isnardi?
And I would have Tad again fill you in a little bit because him and I had the discussion. I mean, I can argue all day long, but you know where I stand on it. I think that we should do everything we can to allow people access to this alternative form of treatment because I've seen the other side of opioid abuse and other medications, and I think that this honestly has given people a lot of relief. It may not be my cup of tea or yours, or may we not be able to personally relate to that because we, we're not in that situation, but I've seen it benefit people as well. But Tad, could you expand a little bit on not just the type of, what the facilities look like, but how highly regulated that they are?
The facilities are completely regulated by the state and all of the activity that goes into them. There are several things, and I'm not probably as familiar as I should be for the question, the, but they have to have video surveillance, they have to have, everybody has to be registered with local law enforcement. So there's, there's quite a bit of regulation that the state is looking at on the facilities themselves. Really what they've allowed for the county to do is just to basically look at them from a building permit and a fire safety standpoint and determine whether they would like them in their jurisdiction or not. And if they do want them, then they have to treat them the same as pharmacies.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the public comment cards, Mr. Michael Patterson.
My name is Michael Patterson. I'm CEO of U.S. Cannabis Pharmaceutical Research and Development and the face of a marijuana business owner. I've lived in Brevard County for over 20 years, and I'm proud to have a daughter who is currently a senior at Vieira High School. My company advises federal, state, local governments, sovereign nations, and private industry on the specifics of marijuana law, zoning and regulations, and the future of the legal cannabis industry. In my professional background, I've run a $200 million skilled nursing home chain with a location here in Brevard County, as well as running pharmacies, labs, home health companies, and assisted living facilities. I'm also a Florida licensed occupational therapist and nursing home administrator. When I was here last year, I had no doubt that this commission would put a moratorium on dispensaries. It was textbook. It's a new program with a bad reputation and a lot of fear mongering, and about how our country will be destroyed via decrease in property values and increase in crime that will be associated with allowing these dispensaries. So let's discuss what's happened since your last decision last year. As of Friday, February 16th, 2018, there are almost 80,000 patients that have signed up in the Florida Medical Marijuana Registry. This number is growing at a rate of 2,500 patients per week and will continue to increase for many years. It is projected that by 2020, half of the medical marijuana patients in the United States will reside in Florida. There are currently 27 dispensaries open and operating in the state, and not one has had any incident of criminal activity whatsoever. A study was released in September 2017 by the University of Wisconsin detailing property values increased in the vicinity of marijuana dispensaries. Another study released by the University of California Riverside in January 2018 showed a decrease in crime in neighborhoods that had a marijuana dispensary. In November 2017, Orange County, Florida approved allowing marijuana dispensaries. Last month, Wellington and Sarasota approved dispensary zoning, and other municipalities, including Titusville, continued to approve dispensary zoning across the state. The number of Brevard County residents who qualify for medical marijuana continues to increase daily. The fact that these patients have no store within 60 miles to access medicine is extremely discriminatory. I hear a lot of people saying, well, patients can get their medication delivered to them, which is true but not realistic for many potential patients who would not seek medicine if they cannot go to a store and talk to somebody to answer their questions. However, if these people qualify for opioids, they can walk into any Brevard County pharmacy and have their script filled within minutes of leaving the doctor's office. The reason dispensaries need to be allowed in Brevard relates to tourism, economic development, and quality of life. Brevard is currently in the midst of an economic boom with the space and defense industry leading the way. We have thousands of people moving to Brevard to work or retire from all over the country. With medical marijuana legal in 29 other states, people who are current medical marijuana patients will move here, or they will bring their aging parents who are using medical marijuana and expect access to stores in order to purchase medicine. Another argument I would like to squash is the one that says, we already have cities in Brevard who have approved marijuana dispensaries, and the argument goes, well, the companies can just put their stores in those cities. The problem with that logic is that you're encouraging the bunching of multiple dispensaries in a small area of the county. This causes patients to have to drive longer distances to access medicine as well as potentially bringing the stigma to those cities that is unwarranted and unnecessary. With dispensaries allowed in the county, we will achieve access to medical marijuana across the entire county, which will decrease the need for multiple marijuana dispensaries... across the entire county, which will decrease the need for multiple marijuana dispensaries in one city or area of the county, and decrease the stigma of medical marijuana in general. Last year, you made the right decision to wait on zoning. Now, make the right decision to allow it. It's the right time to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Unwrath?
Good morning, public.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. That was awesome. I wish I had all those statistics.
If you would state your name and address.
My name is Anita Unwrath, 1170 Idaway, Melbourne. Good morning. It's been a while since I've been here, and this is a different topic. I want to thank you, Commissioner Nardi, because you get it. I hope, after hearing some of us, the others of you will get it. I appreciate what you did four months ago. I believe it was October we were here when the moratorium was put on. I want to thank you for thinking of bringing this up again, rather than waiting until June or July, because I think that's what you said originally, so thank you, Commissioners. I speak on behalf of myself today, but I'm active in the National Multiple Sclerosis Society. Tom and I were just up in Tallahassee this last week advocating for a healthcare bill. Let me give you the numbers. It sailed through the Senate, Senate Bill 98, and House Bill 199, we hope will come before the Health and Human Services Committee this week. It is a bill about getting rid of the "fail first" on medication. Are you familiar with it? Another thing, it's called the STEP Program. It is called "fail first" because the insurance companies say you have to fail on a medication before you can get one that works. My husband has multiple sclerosis. He has had it for 14 and a half years. I have watched him suffer. I'm not saying that if these dispensaries were here in the county that we would necessarily need them. He suffers, and he's going to tell you his story in a minute, but he suffers from a lot of pain. If you think multiple sclerosis is a disease that doesn't have pain, you're dead wrong because it really can be terribly painful, and he's going to tell you about that. I've watched him suffer, and this is a no-brainer, in my opinion. It's access to something that is not opioids. It is access to something. Let me tell you a personal story. I don't believe I would be a candidate for it, but I suffer from sciatica. If any of you knows somebody who suffers from sciatica, it can be very, very painful. And about a year and a half ago, I said to Tom, "Just cut my right leg off, please. I'm just going to go get my leg amputated." It is so terrible, I can't imagine that having, and I apologize to anybody who has had this, but this was in a fit of anger, and I was frustrated. Now I have found some medication that helps me, but if I could take something that was not dangerous, and have a little bit of liquid under my tongue, and it would take away my sciatica pain, I would do it in a heartbeat. I've got some medication now that I said it's got some side effects, but I'm in a pretty good place. So I just want to encourage you, if you deny access in the county, you are sending people elsewhere. I don't know when these things are going to happen in Satellite Beach, Titusville, or Palm Bay, but I am very glad they are, and I think you should make this available. Let's be first in Florida. We want to be first in Florida in space. We want to be first in Florida in schools. Let's be first in Florida by taking the lead on this and showing that these dispensaries can be good for people. Let me take it to a tax issue. I know there's not going to be tax on the medical marijuana, but the people who come to Brevard County, who buy their gas here, they're going to pay taxes. They don't have to go to Orange County or Miami to get this. They're going to stop for lunch. They're going to do some other errands here. They're going to come to Brevard County to purchase things other than their medical marijuana. I like to go out and do several errands at once. Save on gas, save the environment. And so I think that you would see a tax increase, I think you'd see a tax increase in property values to have these things here. And yesterday's newspaper talked about how you're concerned about a $12 million shortfall in taxes in this county. I think there are ways to think of this and just open up your minds a little bit and realize this could be a very good thing. You'd be helping patients, and oh, by the way, it's not going to be the drug addicts. To get your card, it costs something like $500 to register with the state, another $200 to $300 to see a doctor. So you have to have money in order to be able to even be on this list of people who are eligible for medical marijuana, and I think people who can afford it will be people who will bring their other business to Brevard County as well. So please, 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 think about this, and I think it would be good for the citizens of Brevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Unwrath?
Thank you very much. Believe it or not, Tom Unwrath, we live together, 1170 Idaway. I've been here many times before, sometimes leading vacation, sometimes here talking about environmental issues and such. Today, I'd like to give you a face. I don't know that if medical marijuana was available to me right now, that I would use it. I will tell you that Anita was just talking about pain. A couple of years ago, I have MS, okay? Multiple sclerosis. It's one of those things that's on the list that would qualify for medical marijuana. Several years ago, the first thing that happened to me, the first thing that I had was the left side of my face went numb back in 2001. That was the first indication that something was going on that was later diagnosed as MS. A couple of years ago, that numbness, which has never really completely gone away, advanced, progressed to something called trigeminal neuralgia, where it was so bad, I couldn't eat. It was so painful, I could not drink. I'm a pastor. I couldn't talk. It's not a good thing for a pastor. I went to my neurologist, and the only thing he could give me at that point was a prescription for opioids. I didn't take them. Fortunately, it got better a bit, but I am now on some medication that if I take at the level that I could, I mean, he and I have an agreement that I monitor how I'm feeling, and I take what will keep me out of pain. But if I took the level that would be consistently at the top end of things, this medication that I'm taking now is toxic. I mean, it's not an opioid, it's not addictive. It would just kill me. And I'm thinking that's not a good idea. I would like to have, not just for me, there's about 170,000 people in Florida just with MS. I'm not talking about Parkinson's, and epilepsy, and all those other things, cancer patients that could qualify for this. You heard some other statistics. That's a lot of people that could gain a lot of benefit from this. You know, back in the '30s, there was this film that came out, I think it was called Reefer Madness. I mean, it's a parody anymore. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a medication controlled, prescribed, responsibly distributed in places that, as Anita said, would be a benefit to the community. Look at me. It might help me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all the cards. I'm going to close public comment and open up the floor to the Commission. I do want to go ahead and weigh in with the comments, seeing as you guys didn't have lights on yet. Commissioner Nardi just put one on, but I'm going to vote this through today, but I want to throw out some thoughts that I have. There isn't a huge amount of people right now that are allowed to use medical marijuana. You told me there was a little over 47,000 people from 71,000 that applied, so it's not a large group of people. And I voted to approve this for medical use when the ballot came through, so I haven't heard any Commissioner up here have any kind of problem with people using medicine to help them do better. I haven't heard that comment from anybody up here. I know there's a lot of words getting passed around the community, but I haven't heard any of the Commissioners up here say they're trying to withhold any kind of medication from someone who needed it, and I think people do need a good quality of life. I get a little confusion because when my mother, when I had my mother still, they would give her Marital, which was liquid marijuana, which would help her with her appetite and her mood quite a bit, too. So I don't think any medication to withhold from people who need it's a good thing. I think we need to do this. My concerns would be, again, just traffic and putting them in residential areas. I don't believe that these would go in residential areas, and I don't really believe pharmacies should be in residential areas either, so I kind of like doing the criteria that you put on a higher volume road rate. I don't think that's going to affect anything as we do it, and I actually think the pharmacies should be on the same type of heavier volume roadways also. We don't need them in residential areas, and Mr. Knox told me the risk for that would be potentially low, and if there was one place that was totally suitable, you know, they'd come in and we would just approve it and pass it. So I think that is one criteria that maybe we should, you know, look at because I think the pharmaceuticals should also be on a more of a business district than in the neighborhoods. So that's my thought on it, and I had some concern if we were going down the path of this becoming more usable for recreational, well, that's going to be a whole new zoning. So I think they're two different animals. But again, my thought with the traffic concern is that it still is not legal on the federal level, and you can't go put the cash in the bank. So you have large volumes of cash, so I think that's just one thing that we need to put in as an appropriate, maybe guideline here, until we figure out what the federal level's going to do with making this legal so they can utilize bank deposits with the rest of the pharmaceuticals. Thank you. Commissioner Nardi?
Again, I won't bore everybody with the same comments. As it stands now, the county already regulates, so pharmacies don't end up in the middle of residential neighborhoods, correct, Tad? Unless it's, what, community commercial?
If it's in community commercial, which is BU1A zoning district, then it could be allowed.
So it's not going to pop up next, in the middle of somebody's PUD, or in the middle of somebody's subdivision? So that sort of argument is mute. My concern, again, is that we're not only restricting where they can go, but we're also now putting additional restrictions on pharmacies, and I don't think, or a pharmacy could potentially go, and I don't think that that's fair. Now, whether or not you want to be, we want to be upset with the legislature for, you know, for trying to tie it in as equal, or, and again, it's the fault of municipalities not allowing these things to be located, that the legislature came down and said, "Well, fine, then you either ban them, or you allow them where pharmacies go, you give them the same restrictions." But I don't see dropping property values, or, you know, putting additional restrictions on future commercial pharmacies a wise move. So again, I'll support this with the removal of the collector roadway provision and the sanitary water and sewer provision.
Commissioner Thibia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was that a motion to, I'm sorry, was that a motion to remove those two restrictive?
Sure, we'll make it a motion.
I'll second that motion, then.
If I may, if the motion is to remove the conditions, then I think that you would be, just, I think the desire of the motion would be to allow them as a permitted use, which then this ordinance would not need to go forward.
Right.
So if that's, I'm just clarifying for the purposes of the motion.
Okay, then I'll clarify my motion to allow medical marijuana dispensaries as a permitted use.
Okay. Tad, if we, if there was already some kind of criteria to keep pharmacies from being a residential, why did you write an ordinance that would put this in there?
The BU1 is a neighborhood use. It's a neighborhood zoning, so it could be that there are some located there, there may not be some. So where you get the areas that become problematic, to say, is like Port St. John's, where you may have some internal areas where there's BU1A zoning. There could be some in the Merritt Island area where you have like a mixture of, it's further off of the collector-level roadway, and it may have access to a local roadway. So it's just a safeguard. They were, when we put the ordinance together, we looked at all of the zoning districts that were allowable for pharmacies because those would be the ones that we would have to affect, and since the pharmacy could go there, then we have to include that in the ordinance that we proposed.
Thank you. Okay. I have no more lights on. I have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for the public, then that means that this ordinance did not get approved, and the moratorium would sunset on the 9th with the end of session, and then they would be okay as a permitted use.
Correct, sir.
Okay.
We are done with the public hearings, and we are moving into new business. Item A1.
So item A1 is a request to waive Code Section 622887(c) and 622897 of the subdivision requirements to allow a driveway to be located on an exterior roadway to the subdivision, and to allow a common-use lot to be used for a purpose other than it was originally platted for. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. I don't know if the applicant is here or not.
I don't see the applicant. This is in my district, is it okay?
Yes, ma'am. I was going to turn it over to you.
I don't see the applicant. I'll just give the Commission a little background on this, and of course, staff can speak on it as well. This issue came to my office probably a month after I was in office, and basically, I mean, without going into an extensive amount of detail, the property owner is sort of in a trick between the homeowners association versus access to his property. I'm not sure why the property owner isn't here, only, or the applicant isn't here, because I know this issue is extremely important to him because he's dealt with our office several times on this matter. So I would just, you know, if the board approves, I'll make a motion to table till the next meeting, next commission meeting, if that's okay with you guys, and we'll, I'll reach out to him and see if he can come, and maybe in the interim, we can come up with a solution, or we can have some more discussions. Is that...
You wanting to table the item, or do you want to hear if the board is willing to?
I want to see if the board's okay if I make a motion to table it, if they would be in support of it, because I'm not sure, again, why the applicant wouldn't be here. Now, I haven't talked to him in a good while, but I'm sure this would be pretty important for him to be here. He would be here because he's been trying to settle this property for a long time.
And he was informed, he was informed that it would be on the agenda today?
Right.
Do I have a motion to table? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thibia. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're going to table it to the next meeting, Commissioner Nardi?
Yes, and if he's not here, then we'll make it a second.
The next meeting is the March 6 meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving into new business. Item 6A2.
Commissioners, if you will, this is a drawdown request on the letter of credit for the Viera Company for the Barnes Boulevard widening contributions that they've been making. The staff has reviewed it all and find it to be acceptable. We've done several of these, and I'm anticipating this probably be the last time we do a drawdown, except for the next time when it goes to zero. We're just about finished.
Thank you. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We're moving into new business. 6F1. Commissioner Thibia?
6D1.
Sorry, 6D1. No, I'm sorry. I got my alphabet, it's all messed up. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, this is an agenda item in which I'm recommending that Eden Bentley, who's the deputy county attorney in my office, would be appointed as the interim pending the elections next November, and I highly recommend her. She's a very qualified and eminently capable attorney, and as you all know, I won't be here as of April 1st, so if somebody needs to do it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Nardi, is that a new light?
Yeah. Yeah. I am more than confident that Ms. Bentley is qualified to sit in as interim. My concern is the length of time that we're waiting to go out. Now, of course, Eden Bentley, again, is more than qualified, and I welcome and encourage her to apply for the position. But I think waiting to the next November election where the commission may change by one or two commissioners doesn't do this commission justice because, in reality, we may only have a change of one commissioner if Commissioner Smith is reelected. So I would just ask this board to consider going out and doing either a search through our HR department. I mean, I'm a little hesitant to hire a firm, given our last experience. And we did have an internal candidate, so that, you know, obviously, again, I would encourage anybody from the county attorney's office that's qualified and wants to, to apply. But I think we need to go out. I think it's too long of a period of time to wait for a permanent position because it is such an important position.
Thank you. Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And maybe there's a middle ground. If the commission got together and set up some suggestions for minimum qualifications, maybe we could begin the search for the new county attorney and narrow it down or, you know, at least have the list of candidates ready after the election so we won't have to go through the advertising process, all that. While I'm sure the qualifications, a once of qualifications could change with the, with the new commission, I don't know that they would change substantially enough to warrant us waiting that much longer. So just throwing that out there, if we wanted to get together and start putting a list together of certain qualifications that we look for in a county attorney and maybe run that through Mr. Visco over there to come together and put together the commonalities between us so we can discuss them at a, you know, at a future commission meeting in public.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I have to admit, oh, sorry, hit the wrong button. I have to admit, I haven't given a great deal of thought to this. I have thought about it, and I didn't have an objection to waiting. I didn't think about it being a long-term thing. And I know Ms. Bentley has been very capable when she sat in for Mr. Knox. So I didn't think that there was any rush. But I understand what you and Mr. Tabaya are saying. I think that makes sense, too. So perhaps some middle ground, we could do that with, put some suggestions together. And I don't know that we have to do it today, but I like the idea of, moving forward, maybe we could set a day of July 1st or August 1st or September 1st, whatever the board thinks is a more appropriate time than waiting for after the commission. I don't want to speculate whether I'm going to be reelected or not, but we could have two extra people on board. So I think from that standpoint, it might be a good idea to wait because then they would have say in it also. So whatever you guys want to do on this, I can see both sides.
Thank you, sir. I also am very comfortable with Ms. Bentley. I think she's going to step in flawlessly, and it'll be a smooth transition when we lose Mr. Knox. We do have your cell phone number, though, by the way. But I think it might be appropriate to go ahead and have us start putting in what we're looking for in our next county attorney and maybe look towards doing some advertising so that people can put in applications through the community also. So Commissioner Smith, your idea of maybe time period of August or September? Is that what you're recommending?
Well, that would be my thought. And then we would also have a better idea. We could feel more comfortable or less comfortable in saying, well, let's do it now or let's wait till after the election because we will be right up against the election at that point in time. And if the commission feels like it's necessary to wait, we can. If the commission feels confident that we've got a great candidate, then we don't have to wait.
Thank you. Commissioner Isnardi?
How's that for an ambiguous answer?
Pretty good.
And see, my concern that it's six to seven months, you know, and then we get close to the election, and then we're automatically going to default to waiting. And again, it's no reflection. Eden is wonderful. I mean, maybe Eden ends up being our sitting county attorney, and I don't have a problem with that at all. But I think it does this board a disservice if it seems like everybody's close to retirement. You know what I mean? It's, you know, and I don't want to say somebody's got their foot out the door, but that's the reality of it. We've seen it all here with past, you know, upper management, and that's, that's the reality, that no one wants to quite talk about the elephant in the room. So I, again, I would encourage us, take, maybe take the time. And that was going to be my second suggestion that Commissioner Tabaya brought up, is that we all talk about our criteria or what we all want, and then start moving forward on it. Because we may not find anybody the first round, but I don't think waiting six, seven months to get close to the election, and then we're close to the election, and then we're going to say, well, let's just wait till the election, for the potential just to have one change in commission. Because that's, you know, we're only assured for a new, one new commissioner. We may not even have two. So again, if everybody waited till an election to make a decision, then it's such an important position, is what I'm saying. I want somebody who's here, who's staying, who's committed to the job, who we've all had a chance to vet. I think we're all pretty smart people, and we can all handle it. I mean, Lord knows, we went through the wire and, or through the wringer trying to find the manager, and he was right under our nose, and with a little push, we got him to stay. But, you know, and that could happen in this case, but I would like us to move forward on it, still.
And if you want me to weigh in, I'll say that I'm pretty sure we're only going to have one new commissioner.
There you go.
Well, Commissioner Barfield just made, you go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. I can confirm that there will be one commission change.
Yes, just one.
Quite frankly, I'd like to be in on the decision, having spent a plenty amount of time with, with this board and understanding what is required and what we need. I'd like to, if at all possible, be in on that decision.
And I'll just follow up with that, if you don't mind. I mean, and you're really qualified to do it, given what you do in the private sector. So.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And one wrinkle here, because of sunshine, you know, we've got an HR director who is, whether many of us know, is eminently qualified, potentially for that position. I believe you are a licensed attorney, Mr. Visco, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So I hate to put you on, I mean, it makes sense to run through yours. Would you be crazy enough to?
Like, I can put you, put your mind at ease, Commissioner. I would not be a candidate for this position. I'm not a member of the Florida bar.
Well, I would suggest that we have somebody who is, has formal legal training, has a great deal of HR experience, that we would put our suggestions through, at least start with Mr. Visco before we potentially look to outsource. That would be, you know, whenever you got an opportunity to, to come up with those qualifications to get to, Mr. Visco.
I'm good with that. I wouldn't mind having an advertisement, though, and see what we have in the community also. I think on this, too, if you guys wouldn't mind, just because I'm just going to go ahead and admit, I'm not that on top of what should be the best qualifications for the attorney. So I would like some input in from Mr. Knox also on what we also should be looking for when we're trying to make a determination for this position. So I'm thinking, from what I'm hearing you guys say, we should probably get on this sooner or later, maybe within the next couple of months, get aggressive on maybe some opportunities for looking at someone.
I agree, and I don't think we have to set a date today. Let's just start moving forward. We'll feel, we'll get to a point where we feel comfortable that we want to, want to do something.
Okay. And this word will get out, so we'll spark some interest out there within the county and the community.
So Commissioners, what I'm hearing is, we can begin an open-ended recruitment process, we can start the advertising, we can keep it open for an extended period of time.
Before we do that, we'll be coming back to the board, and we will bring back the current description with any recommended changes, and we'll make sure we get commission input as to the specifics of what you're looking for. We will then develop internally a recruitment brochure, which you would do for high-level positions. That's what we would do here. And at that point, with the board's approval, we'll move forward in beginning the recruitment. That process will take a few months to get that all done, which I think is exactly where the board would want to be. So that's how we'll proceed, if that's good with the board.
Sound good?
Works for me.
Is consensus good, or do you need a motion?
I think we need a motion, too.
For Ms. Bentley?
For Ms. Bentley, yeah. So I'll make a motion to appoint Eden Bentley as interim deputy county attorney.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes 5-0. Now we're into new business. Item 6F1. Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. House Bill 3 passed the legislature on a bipartisan vote, 8720. There is a Senate version that is similar, yet not as, doesn't provide the same amount of transparency safeguards as in the House bill, yet it does provide some meaningful reform for economic development agencies. So I have a resolution supporting the passage of Senate Bill 1714 during the 2018 regular session of the Florida Senate. And with your indulgence, Madam Chair, may I go ahead and read the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas Florida Senate Senator Perry has introduced Senate Bill 1714 for consideration during the 2018 regular session, and whereas a related bill, HB 3, was passed by the Florida House of Representatives, January 25, 2018, whereas Brevard County is honored to have a highly effective and responsible Senate delegation, the Florida Senate, Hucle and Mayfield, and whereas Senate Bill 714 streamlines existing requirements for the economic development agencies and tourism promotion agencies by treating public and private agencies more equally under the law, and whereas Senate Bill 1714 increases transparency by requiring such agencies to disclose and protect against conflict of interest, and whereas Senate Bill 1714 would bring more sunshine to government by requiring these agencies to post videos of their meetings online and make certain contracts public record, and whereas Senate Bill 1714 would lead to more accountability by requiring a more robust annual report, including performance standards, and whereas Senate Bill 1714 further requires the auditor general to conduct periodic audits of these agencies, and whereas Senate Bill 1714 requires abuses in the use of taxpayer funds by requiring that all economic development agencies and tourism promoting agencies be transparent in their travel expenses, and whereas Senate Bill 14 places reasonable limits on the use of taxpayer funds in paying exorbitant salaries, now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commission of Brevard County does let me know that it supports the passage of Senate Bill 1714 due to its desire for increased transparency, effectiveness, and accountability within economic development agencies and tourism promoting agencies. Don't order adopted in regular session, 20th of February, 80, 2018. I'd like to make a motion that we send this to our Senate delegation. Madam Chair?
Thank you, sir. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Commissioner Isnardi, your?
I received a letter from the EDC, and I looked at the, at the bill, and I don't, you know, I understand their concerns, but it's not going to affect transparent, it's not going to, it's not going to affect, or it's not going to have an impact on, you know, discussions and things that they don't have to disclose to the public, you know, as far as trade secrets and that sort of thing. So I think, you know, although they may be worried, you know, usually by the time these bills get through the Senate, they get a little, not, I hate to say watered down, but for lack of a better term, they get to where they're more reasonable. So I'll second and support this.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Knox, is that an old light? Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm going to take a whole different tact on this. While I certainly don't oppose transparency, my overriding objection to this Senate Bill 1714 comes from some comments I've read in various publications and internet from some of the principals involved in this. And to me, it just comes down simply to home rule. And I just find it very interesting that conservative Republicans who wish for smaller government are looking to eliminate home rule. And I've also heard in those discussions that some of the leaders in Tallahassee are upset at how liberal counties are doing things that these particular individuals don't like because they think they're being too liberal. And while I can agree with that thought process, here's where I have a problem. When the Democrats take over Tallahassee, and it's going to happen, it will happen. It's just the nature of politics. What happens when that occurs? When they come to a conservative Brevard County and those Democrats, those liberals, say, you know what, we don't like the way you do business, and we're going to take away that, and this would allow home rule to go away, and they can just say, well, we're going to impose our liberal thoughts on you, and you can't do anything about it because this bill took home rule away. So I will not support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, I received an email, and I assume others have, too. Basically, Senate rules prohibit a bill that has not been through committee from being amended to another bill on the floor. So what that means is the bill will not make it through the Senate before the end of session. So I don't know why we really are still even discussing this, if it's not even going to come up for a vote.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I got that same email from Catherine Rudolph, and holding Catherine Rudolph as an expert on what happens in legislature is making me an expert on SpaceX because I launched rockets in junior high school. Senate Bill 4.3 says, "The Senate may, at the discretion of the President, take up messages from the House at any time." As we're seeing right now with the tragedy in Parkland, the Senate, as well as the House, takes up many things in the 11th hour. And very, there is a mechanism for this to take, for this to go forward. Items like this in my tenure certainly went forward. So while I respect the opinion of not wanting transparency with the ability to give the public the opportunity to watch these type of meetings, I respect that. What I cannot say is, as a technicality, we should not hear this. This commission, at the discretion of Chairman Smith at the time, and I think did a very good job when he sent up a resolution to Congress dealing with, dealing with?
Firearms.
Firearms. So, you know, certainly, we've done this as a commission before. There's still an opportunity to do this, and I don't know how it has anything to do with home, home rule or limiting home rule, but by saying that we do not have, this bill is dead, is factually incorrect.
Thank you, sir. And I'm a little, my concern would still be with the home rule portion of it, too. If we have a problem here, I think we do need to work for, with creating a solution if we're having transparency issues here on level. But I think keeping government as close as you can to the local government is appropriate to do. Same way, I would fight for the state to be able to make changes that the federal government's not allowing, even as far as medical marijuana. So I'm probably not going to vote to support this, but I do appreciate your work, Commissioner Tabaya. You've been at that House level and we haven't, so maybe you've got a different understanding than I do. But from where I'm at right now, I'm probably not going to support this. Any other comments? Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, I can't support it because the bill actually is just another attempt to shift oversight from the local level, actually where the funds originate and are invested to the state level, which is, again, eliminating home rule, which I kind of believe is a foundational principle of our country. Because local leaders are so much better equipped to understand the needs of their constituents. And the bigger and further away the government entity, the more out of touch it will be. So home rule is still very important to me.
Yes, sir. I have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. It fails 3-2-2. Thank you. We have a citizen request. Citizen, I can't help it. Kane, if you would come forward, please. Good morning.
My name is Christine Kane. I reside at 6945 Kaler Avenue in Cocoa. I come for you today to ask you to support House Bill 6030 and Senate Bill 1014, an act relating to recyclable materials, amending Senate 403.7033, deleting a preemption of local law relating to regulation of auxiliary containers, wrappings, or disposable plastic bags. bags, providing an effective date, presented by legislator Richardson and co-introduced by legislators Geller, Mercado, Russell, and Smith. Sadly, there are no state legislators representing Brevard County on that list, although I did contact them requesting they co-sponsor this. I believe that you are very familiar with the history here. The state referred this issue to the Department of Environmental Conservation, and the department returned its recommendations to the legislature in 2010. According to previous statutes, municipalities are prohibited from adopting any rule, et cetera, regarding this issue until the state adopts the recommendations of the department. And so, here we sit, eight years later, waiting for that to happen. Legislation has been presented by various legislators over the years and never makes it out of committee. I'm hoping this time will be different. It's come to the point where it's been said that we humans are conducting a singular, uncontrolled experiment on a global scale in which billions of tons of material will accumulate across all major terrestrial and aquatic ecosystems on the planet. This quote is ironically from Fox News. "We've stood idly by while we poison our marine life and disrupt our own health, destroy our landscapes, and litter our beloved beaches, clog our waste streams and landfills, and the list goes on. To put it mildly, this must stop." I find it ironic that the state, when it originally requested the analysis of the issue by the Department of Environmental Protection, stated, "Prudent regulation of recyclable materials is crucial to the ongoing welfare of Florida's ecology and economy. Actions speak louder than words, and according to the non-action by the legislature, it appears that the ecology and economy of the state of Florida is not a priority, that inaction is what has precipitated legislation being presented year after year. While the state may not recognize the necessity of protecting the welfare of Florida's ecology and economy, its residents certainly do, and you have supported my request for this legislation in the past, and I appreciate that very much. It's time that the counties of the state of Florida be given the right to handle this issue the way that they see fit. These bills eradicate the preemption of local law relating to the regulation of auxiliary containers, wrappings, or disposable plastic bags. It's about time the counties be given the ability to govern their communities on their own without the interference of a state that chooses to do nothing on this subject. Please consider supporting this legislation. I've taken the liberty of drafting a resolution for your perusal. And if you don't mind, I would beg your indulgence for just one more comment relative to a timely subject. The subject for the record is a matter of nonpartisan cooperation between the county, the state of Florida, and the United States Congress. The Declaration of Independence, a document which is revered by this country, clearly states in part that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among those are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In 1772, the Bill of Rights was adopted. The Bill of Rights Amendment 2 stated, "A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Several years later, Congress approved that inclusion of parts of the Bill of Rights, and among them was the original Amendment 2 to the Bill of Rights. The point is, the Declaration of Independence gave us the foundation for what this country would become, and the Bill of Rights and Constitution gave us the roadmap to get there. It is my opinion that we have regulated, excuse me, relegated our right to life to those who believe that the Second Amendment, written in the 1700s, gives permission for citizens to carry automatic assault weapons. The time has come for all branches of government to cross the aisle and come together for the benefit of the citizens. I ask that you formally request that all representatives of Brevard County, both state and federal, do their jobs and come together to pass meaningful legislation, protect our children, our grandchildren, and our citizens from any further horrific acts of violence. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions on the original? No, thank you. Commissioner Barfield?
This is an issue that came up, I think, earlier on. We've had people come discuss with us the control of Star Foam and plastic bags, and the issue's not the actual bags themselves or any of it. This is really, this is truly another issue with home rule. This, the legislature took away the ability for counties and cities to even make a decision what they wanted to do with any kind of issue with the paper bags, I mean, I'm sorry, plastic bags, and that's, I have a big issue with. I support this. I actually do support this because, again, let the cities and the ones who are closest to the issues make that decision, not someone in Tallahassee, so...
Is that a motion, sir?
I want to hear from rest of the board first.
I support it also. Okay, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you. I just ask if we keep on, you know, thumbing the drum of home rule that we vote that way. On a couple of occasions, I've asked that parks that were located in cities be turned over to parks, and many times, at least two I can think of, we've decided that those parks are better held with our agencies instead of parks. So, while I respect the idea of home rule, I think it's only fair that we use it all the time instead of only the times that it meets our ideologies one way or another. So, and I'd like to make, I'd like to let Ms. Kane know, thank you so much for coming forward while I disagree with this. I greatly respect you for not only coming to bring this to us, but to bring it to the various representatives and senators in Brevard County. It is meaningful. We had a representative up here who talked about texting while driving, and while I voted that down, she was able to get 20 or 30 different county commissions to pass resolutions, including ours, and I'm pretty darn sure that that is going to become state statute. So, it starts with individuals like you that get behind these type of things, and please don't think of my note vote as something discouraging. I just think that my ideology is a little bit different than what is located here.
Thank you, sir, and that's appreciated. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to approve the support of resolution, to support the resolution, House Bill 6039 and Senate Bill 1014. And again, it's, we're not making a decision amongst ourselves whether we're going to support disposable plastic bags or not. This is simply allowing us to have that ability in any future commission if they decide to take up this issue. So, I think it's important.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Isnardi, you would like to have discussion?
Yeah, I'm just commenting, similar to what Commissioner Tabia said. We can't use home rule when it suits our argument. And again, while I do appreciate you bringing this issue forward, I mean, we, it is our cities, counties, communities that elect our state representatives, so I like to paint them in a negative light. I don't like everything the legislature does, but at the same time, we can't just poo-poo the things we don't like and say it's a home rule issue, because that last item that everyone was arguing home rule on was completely, was a stretch, at least in my opinion, and this one may, may be a little bit more clear. We can pick apart every bill that goes through the House and the Senate and use the home rule argument to try to make it sound good, but to me, this isn't a home rule issue. This is a, this is a business rights issue for me, so I won't be supporting it.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion on the table in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2 with Commissioner Isnardi and Tabia in opposition. Thank you, ma'am. We have a, somebody who showed up we weren't expecting, so I would like to entertain a motion to untable New Business 6A1 so that we can re-discuss it today.
I'll make a motion to untable 6A1. The applicant walked in...
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I guess it passes 5-0. We're going to untable the item, New Business 6A1. Tad, I believe you're on.
Item 6A1 is a request to waive Code Section 6228-87C and 6228-97 of the subdivision requirements to allow the driveway to be located on an exterior roadway of a subdivision and to allow a common lot to be used in a purpose other than it was originally plotted
Again, I talked a little bit, just briefly, on this item, and I wish I would have brought the aerial shots. My printer was printing those pictures when I left, and I didn't want to be late for the meeting, but, because it, they were high-resolution pictures, and it's difficult, if you've read the agenda item or we briefed on it, it's difficult to quite explain unless you drive Brandywine and unless you look at exactly where this property is located. And I sympathize with the applicant. I sympathize less with the HOA, to be perfectly honest, because you have a right to have access to your property. But within that, also, you know, looking at it, what is more dangerous in my, you know, without doing a very expensive traffic study, is it more dangerous for the gentleman to back out his driveway at the, right at the beginning of a turn-in to his subdivision that, you know, has a lot of people living there, or there's already an existing driveway that's right at, right before that, where that turn lane begins on Brandywine, putting a driveway right next to that? I guess that's a decision for the commission to make, and again, I wish you could Google Earth it to look at the distance. That turn lane is very long, and it's very visible, and I don't believe we have an issue with accidents where the existing driveway is. So, I mean, I'll go with, you know, obviously, the applicant can also plead his case if, you know, the commission doesn't mind, we'll have him come up, but again, this is a very complicated situation, and I think that there's some kind of ground we can meet without destroying the homeowners association's entrance, at the same time allowing this property owner to have a driveway, which he should legally be allowed to do. I think that perhaps the safety issue may be overstated because it's not something we usually do, but again, until you drive it or until you look at an aerial shot of this, you can see why there would be plenty of time for anybody, for one individual at one residence pulling in, you know. Again, I can see it both ways.
Commissioner Isnardi, I got a little lost in that. What are you recommending, ma'am?
I know, exactly. Exactly.
What's your recommendation?
Unless, unless staff is going to tell me it's an absolute danger not to put this, not to allow us to have this driveway there, I don't know how it could possibly be more dangerous than having him, because if you, if you look at the entrance to Brandywine, there's quite an extensive landscape.
I have some pictures that can help out.
Yes, and for him to put his driveway in the entrance of the Brandywine subdivision, probably, yeah, probably makes it more dangerous for him than it would be to put, I'll try to find a good one here, than it would be to, again, I think it's more dangerous for you to have a driveway in the entrance.
To have driveway at the very beginning of the entrance of the community.
Because people are constantly making that right into the, into the subdivision, more so than you just pulling out.
Exactly, and the visibility from the north to south on the Brandywine lane, which is the lane that we're trying to get the driveway relocated, is a lot more accessible than the community's visibility coming in and out of the estate.
And again, I feel for you because it's, again, you're here, and that's what, you know, a year ago, I suggested to you is that you plead to the board because our, we don't allow it because it's at the beginning of a turn lane where you're desiring to put the driveway. However, again, I have zero sympathy for the HOA. I know people in Brandywine that don't care about that landscape buffer. They want you, they believe that you have an access, you have a right to an access to your property.
That is true.
Where I, where I am conflicted is giving you that access to that driveway may be more dangerous than giving you access on Brandywine Lane.
I concur.
And without an extensive traffic study, I mean, again, I could ask staff's opinion on the matter. There is a lot of visibility on that turn lane into Brandywine, and it's a very long stretch. It's not like it's a quick jaunt into, do you know what I'm saying? You guys know what I'm talking about. I know it's hard, difficult to explain without an aerial shot, but...
The picture that you have there, there's a driveway that was already existing.
Yes.
It was a property that I used to own.
Right.
And what we're trying to do is just pretty much have the driveway relocated right next to the existing driveway. So, in all sense, I understand the HOA's issue about traffic safety and maintaining the landscaping, and I've lived in the community for over 12 years, and I respect their opinion, and I agree with that, and from my perspective, I feel it'd be a more effective and safety issue if it was relocated onto Brandywine Lane. I've been trying to sell this property for over three years. I've had numerous offers on it, and the only thing that's holding it up right now is the driveway. And right now, I have a contingency offer on the property, and if we can agree that having it on, relocated on Brandywine Lane would make a lot more sense, I can put this bad boy to bed.
Thank you, sir. And you're Mr. Wright, and you are from West Melbourne.
Correct.
I'm just helping with your name and address for the record.
All right.
Okay. Commissioners, comments?
Thank you.
Commissioner Isnardi?
Well, I mean, we can ask staff. Obviously, they're going to say that it's a safety issue, but again, are we creating a bigger safety issue into Brandywine because it's right at the entrance if he needs to put a driveway there?
The traffic speeds on Brandywine are much higher than on the subdivision street immediately after the people have turned in, so we believe that the entrance onto Brandywine is less safe than the entrance onto the subdivision street.
Again, I know that's your standard answer, and I get that, but if, and I wouldn't, and I wouldn't even consider it if I didn't see how long that entrance lane is going in. Again, I wish I would have had the aerial shots for you guys, but the way the road curves, you can really, you have enough time to see. I'm more concerned with you trying to pull out and somebody zipping into that sub.
Exactly. Some of the pictures depict the obstruction of trees and foliage at the entryway of the Brandywine Estates community. I've also submitted pictures of the north and south visuality of Brandywine Lane. Yes, the speed limit in Brandywine Estates is 20 miles per hour, but a lot of times, the individuals that might be coming into community, they don't adhere to that 20 miles per hour, they do a lot of speeding, so it does create a little bit of a traffic hazard. Understand, the county's saying that the speed limit on Brandywine Lane is at 40 miles per hour. There's already two driveways on Brandywine Lane, and they are having complete access to the visibility and stuff, so I don't see what the issue would be for a third driveway for a safer...
And can I ask a question?
Safer entryway onto the...
Do we have accidents at that, those driveways typically, or because of those driveways are there? I mean, I know we have accidents on Brandywine, and we've got other issues with 95 and Brandywine.
Yeah, the accidents are off 95.
Right.
I think that turn, yeah.
That's, that's a battle for another day, right?
We don't have any specific accident history at those driveways. I would add this, if the commission is inclined to approve this, that if you could add a restriction, that the cars will come, will not back out onto Brandywine, that that would certainly be a significant improvement over unrestricted access.
And perhaps maybe that the driveway be right next to the, because your property is right up against that existing driveway, correct?
That is correct. That is the intention of the prospective buyer, is to put the driveway very, pretty much right next to the existing driveway.
Because, and just so the commission knows, we tried to even, and it didn't work because the property owner wasn't agreeable, we tried to even get permission, special permission, to use the existing driveway because the property owners know each other, and we weren't able to do that. So, we tried a few different...
X-Way situation, so it's not going to happen.
I was trying to save you the drama, but...
It's not going to happen.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's, again, I think it's more dangerous, people making that right into the blind subdivision with all that foliage there than it is, I mean, could staff write something up that would...
Is that a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Without not being able to back up?
Approve the driveway waiver, subject to the owner not being able to back out into traffic and the driveway being as close to the existing driveway as possible?
I put that as a stipulation in our contract, that he backs out front way.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
I appreciate it. Thank you for bringing back my case.
I'm glad you can finally sell your property.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving into board reports and presentations.
Got pictures?
Oh.
Can you have them back, or they are now?
They want to keep them.
Okay.
I think they're part of the public record now.
That's fine.
Wasn't any family photos in there anyways, right?
No, no.
Okay, Frank Abate, county manager. Thank you, sir.
I have no reports.
County attorney Scott Knox.
No report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barfield?
No report.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and you alluded to it at the beginning, and thank you for doing that about the loss of a deputy. Instead of all of us, I imagine it's all on our agendas right now, is doing some sort of resolution honoring his service to Brevard County, and sunshine precluding us from doing it, I think that if, the chairwoman, would that be something... Sunshine precluding us from doing it, I think that if, the chairwoman, would that be something you would be willing to take?
I would be honored to. It's actually a family friend.
Okay.
So if y'all come, you're gonna be at my home church. So it'd be nice seeing you there, so...
And also to bring a resolution, you know, to the board, hopefully in the near future, that we can commemorate his service, not only to the community, but, you know, to his family here at the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. I would be really honored to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
No, I would just like to reemphasize the fact that the entire community, I would think, is mourning the loss of Deputy Kevin Stanton. What a tragic accident. It's just a freak accident that occurred, and unfortunately, it took his life. And the community is hurting, and certainly, the sheriff's department is heartbroken over this. So our condolences go out to everyone.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Isnardi?
I concur with Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Smith. And my heart goes out to his brothers and sisters that he works with. And to see the sheriff on TV trying to keep his motions about him is, you know, it hits home to all of us, and it's close to home. And, you know, we think about shootings and robberies and all the violence that these guys come face-to-face with every day. And we don't think about, you know, how much traveling and how much danger is on the road. And how, you know, as we say, when God's ready for you, you know, He comes for you. So I pray for his family, and I pray for the community for healing. And again, it shows how caring Brevard is when the sheriff just gets hundreds and hundreds of messages expressing condolences. So our hearts go out to them. And with that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna piggyback on all that. And Mr. Stanton was just a wonderful person, and his family is just tremendous. They're great assets to the community. He's gonna be greatly missed. Young guy, just a kind, wonderful person. And I just hope everybody get an opportunity to turn out and just honor him and bless his family, show them their support. So with that, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.